Yeah, I saw him, he was telling me about it.
It's mainly pizza, it's a nice, it's a really nice pizza.
Yes, exactly.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order this, the ordinance committee meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Before we call to order, I'd like to rise for a moment of silence. Our councillor, Zandry, is facing some challenges and I'd ask you to keep him in your thoughts. Thank you. Do I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Before somebody notices. They'll probably get the message to somebody. They'll do flag.
Here.
Here. Here, for the record, councillor Morgenstein has just walked in. Thank you, can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 22nd ordinance committee meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Onto item A, discussion, I'm sorry, five, there's two items, item A, discussion and possible action to establish means of providing joint oversight over the animal control trust fund by councillor Tusta, and then discussion and possible action on section 46 of the Town of Wallingford's ordinance entitled "Reserve accounts be amended to include a subdivision called Town of Wallingford Dog Pound Expendable Trust Fund." I guess councillor Testa will start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, well, the reason I requested a discussion here was to, pretty much to brainstorm for starters, talk about all the possibilities, all the potential advantages, the potential pitfalls, challenges, whatever it might be, to, for us to achieve a point where the council has a say in the utilization of the animal control trust fund. That was the point of all this. I wouldn't want anyone in the public or watching or involved to think that there's any way that this is going to be a discussion and/or opportunity for action on the conditions at the animal shelter, or any questions about what's going on there, or anything of the sort, or any attempt to force action which is not even within our power. So I didn't want there to be unreasonable expectations. But given the discussions we've had, given the circumstances that exist in our recent review and understanding of the, of the trust fund's existence, the way the ordinance is written, and how it's utilized, or how it should be utilized, put it mildly, I thought it'd be good to have the discussion. Off the top, someone would say, well, listen, when this, when the fund was first established in 1993, it was at the request of the existing, at the time, dog warden, and in accordance with the way the charter's written and any other laws that apply to handling funds of this sort, the comptroller at the time, Mr. Myers, presented to the council, along, obviously, with the assistance of the law department, an ordinance that established this animal control fund. And the fund was to be set up with any and all donations that might come in, and also, apparently, the, at the time, and I think because of the way the charter is written, it was suggested that the council have authority over expenditures made from that fund. And not long thereafter, if not immediately, the dog warden said, you know what, the real reason I want this fund is so that I can ask for things really pretty quickly, and it'd probably be a little more easy, a little more functionally simple, if you will, to have the mayor be the one who authorized the expenditures. So they went off to wait for meetings. And it was a common sense kind of suggestion, and I believe everybody at the time, I can't speak for them, believe it or not, I wasn't there, I think they just said, that's a good idea, so they switched it over and made a very, made a change, so that instead of the council having the authority to utilize funds, the mayor had the authority to do that. And it's gone on from there. Of course, we know that in 2000, I forgot the date now, we've talked about it so much, but of course, that large bequest from the Susan Drew estate made that fund, you know, the large chunk of money that it is today. But the, and it itself carried some conditions according to the wishes of, of the deceased as to how that money could be used, not very different from the intent, I think, of anything else, but it specified things so that it wouldn't be seen as a chunk of money that could be used to go build a new facility at some point. Her wishes apparently were that this money was always going to be there, more as an endowment, to make sure that no animal in the care of our shelter ever wanted for care. You can determine, you know, you can interpret that any way you wish, and I believe it's been utilized, according to those wishes, admirably since. It's been argued and discussed and probably not often disagreed with that improvements to the shelter could conceivably come under the auspices of that wish, and I don't think anyone argues that that's not the case either. But that kind of is where we are. So I, I thought, given everything that's happened in the last six months and over the last few years, maybe the council should have, have a say in this, as it was initially intended, because things change, and we're not sure how we can go about doing that. Because anytime a good suggestion is made, it's very easy to say, wait a minute, put it into practice, what's going to happen if, when, and then? So that's why I wanted to have this discussion. I'd like the council in the mix, plain and simple. I don't want the council to have sole authority. I'm not saying the mayor shouldn't have the ability to authorize expenditures from that fund. I'm simply saying the council should be a partner in that, in the, in the utilization of that money. At that point, everything's wide open, and that's why I want it tonight to be. I appreciate, I respect my two colleagues, councillor Fishbine and councillor Marone, who have both proposed, have made suggestions of things we can consider and adopt tonight. So I appreciate your efforts in that regard. I wasn't looking for tonight to be a night where we resolve this, but if we do, more power to us, because I don't think in the short, in immediate, long term, it's going to make any real difference to what's happening at the council, I mean, at the shelter right now, because I don't think anybody is suggesting or promoting, proposing any type of ordinance that would force utilization of funds out of that account. That flies in the face of our charter, which we can't change by ordinance. So there's my long-winded explanation of what I was looking for. I'd like us all to just, hey, throw it out there. You know what I'd like to see? How can that happen? And I think a nice workshop-type discussion is the way to handle it, and then we see where it goes from here. So thank you very much.
Certainly. So Attorney Small, I seem to recall you telling us at our last regular meeting that you were the one person who was in the room at the time, that this was discussed, and, and that you recall the fervid, energetic demand of the then dog warden or animal control officer that she not have to go to council meetings for allocations from this fund. And I'm just hoping you can clarify for us, did the council delegate by resolution, by the delegation that puts the decision power in the hands of the mayor? Does that, did that happen by resolution or something else?
I forgot how this works, I haven't been known.
It works.
It was by vote of the council. So basically, the policy that was adopted in 1993 was, it was a policy that the, between the council and the comptroller put into place, and then the dog warden at the time objected to the council having to approve each item, so that power was put by the council to the mayor by vote of the council. So that's how it's operated since then. So if you wanted to make some alterations to that, you could do something like, you could do a combination of things, you could set a dollar limit as to what doesn't have to come to the council, you could do it by category of expense, could be, you know, one level could be administrative, something else could be the council, you could do it that way, you could do a combination of that. So you could put in those layers of when and how the council has a say in it, how you wish to do that. So that, that would be one thing, a way of doing it.
So we could simply revisit the policy, not necessarily have to, I mean, no criticism to councillor Fishbine's suggestion, but we wouldn't necessarily have to draft an ordinance?
You wouldn't have to draft an ordinance, and, you know, I mean, just my comment is, given that you have a brand-new animal control officer, I don't know, I think that maybe gives him a little bit of time for him to see how things work, because he may have his own suggestions about how to do that, but I think, you know, if the council is interested, you know, you can decide at what level, as I said, by both category and/or expense or a combination of both, where something has to come to you. I mean, I think if you're talking about vet bills, you know, I would think that that's something that they want to take care of right away, and it wouldn't come to the council. And I think that that was Shirley's main objection at the time, is that type of situation. You know, if there's something else that you think, some kind of threshold, either monetary or in terms of the category and what the type of use is, then you could do something like that.
Thank you. Councillor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the benefits of ordinance is I get to see Janice again and get to hear all of her learned guidance here, and I want to thank councillor Testa for his summarization of where we are. As I said at the last meeting, you know, I'm just disappointed in how we got here. You know, openness and transparency, very important to me, and certainly for me to find out about a concern that's unaddressed by somebody who in good faith is hired to work for our town, is distressing to me. People call me all the time and say, you know, there's a problem in this department, or I'm having problems with this, and, you know, I'll try and put them in the right direction. So, you know, my initial take is, what could we do without treading upon that ability to approve expenditures from this fund, but be knowledgeable enough so that when there is some sort of a problem, we can do something about it? Because certainly, the history that I've seen is there was a request, apparently in 2018, for air conditioning at the air control, the animal control facility. And that request was not granted for various reasons, and nothing happened, as far as I can tell about that, until recently, when it's brought to our attention that there was a problem. So, you know, that's why I took a step back and looked at the procedure, and I understand, and I appreciate the differences here, the utilization of the fund, because certainly we hear about emergency operations that need to be done, and obviously, that expenditure has to be done relatively quickly, but then we have possible infrastructure things or larger things, so it is possible to parse this out. And I think knowledge is important. I know, Janice, with your office, I'm always impressed when I get your annual report, you know, some people think you just come to our meetings, and that's all, you know, but when I, I see your report, and I'm able to share that with others, no, that office does a lot of things, a lot of various different things, right? You know, so perhaps it would be appropriate if anytime an expenditure is requested out of this fund, that we have knowledge, and we know, you know, okay, the mayor approved it, and that's the intent of the language that I've submitted for consideration. And I guess, to advance the discussion, Mr. Chairman, if you'll have, I would move the language that I have presented, we'll see where we get. Do you want me to read it, or it's already part of the record?
You don't have to read it, it's part of the record, it's, it was published with the last version of the agenda, so I'll accept your motion. Is there a second? Seconded by councillor Testa.
And that's basically all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the council? Councillor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Testa for sort of getting the ball rolling here on this topic. So, on Craig's motion, I guess, I like the idea of the council having more of a role in how the money from the trust fund is spent, but I like the idea of the council having more of a role in how a lot of things in town are done, you know, including, not the day-to-day operations of the, of the facility, but I think there's a lot of things that we, we don't know about. I think that, as the problem was identified in the beginning, so the, the air conditioning is sort of what brought all this to light, right? But then they brought, there were some other issues, like broken lights and things, the most disturbing issue of which, and maybe this is just the dad side of me, but that there was no hot water for the washing machine. And I say to myself, how do, like, how would you hook up a washing machine without hot water? And it's sort of mind-boggling, but obviously, someone did it at some point, and it was either never found out, or no one ever reported it. And so, to me, it seems like a matter of oversight, not, and I'm not pointing, you know, fingers at the mayor or at any particular office, but at some point, someone didn't send something up the chain of command that there was an issue. So, I don't necessarily disagree with what councillor Fishbine's idea is, that the council should have more direct oversight, but I don't feel like we need to approve every, you know, every surgery or every expenditure. I sort of liked how councillor Testa let us off with the, sort of a criteria, or a list of things, or maybe Janice was talking about it, is sort of have a criteria of, of what we do. I think that the thing is, I think more light, more eyes, I think, is a, is the solution to the problem. So, depending on how Craig's motion goes, you know, my idea that I presented to the council over the weekend was that we have a commission, an animal welfare commission, or an animal, yeah, an animal welfare commission, that would work with the, the animal control officer, and sort of over, you know, we have a rec commission, we have some other commissions that oversee different departments of town, not oversee, but work with different departments of town to sort of shed light on things. So, you know, I think if someone in the public had called any one of us and said, you know, there's a problem at the, at the animal control facility, I think it would have gotten some attention. So, not, I'm interested to see what the other thoughts are on Craig's motion, but I think that we need to maybe involve more members of the public in this solution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not necessarily opposed to either of the, the two ideas, the commission or the proposed ordinance, but my opinion at this point is, I, I just, I don't know that this needs to be made any more complicated, I think that it would be best to kind of take a few steps back and make it less complicated, and I'm sure that the animal control officer and employees there don't want to get bogged down in paperwork, and, you know, I'd rather see them spending their time taking care of the animals than, you know, having to worry about sending us, you know, requests within certain timeframes and getting bogged down in the paperwork. So I had said at the last meeting that I, I was unsure how this even got to this point where the council wasn't involved, because, by the way, I was reading the charter, if there's a gift, then the council adminis, accepts the gift and administers that, and so I think at the point of that gift, when the gift was given, the council would have determined how to spend that gift. And then, you know, as Attorney Small just pointed out, it was by a vote of the council to, to kind of, to give up that ability or that authority. So, to me, I think the easiest way to kind of just bring this back and simplest is just to, to maybe say, to maybe edit that vote, so to speak, and say that we want, you know, we want the authority, if it's maybe for, you know, infrastructure improvements, or any requests that are not veterinary bills, that we would maybe take back some of that, that authority. So, again, I'm not necessarily opposed to these, but I, I think we may be making it a little bit more complicated than it needs to be, so maybe we can just go back to a council vote, like they did in 93, and just change it to what we feel is more applicable to today. Thank you.
I, I am inclined to agree with you. I, I think the council just needs to revisit the policy in some constructive form and address some level of revisiting oversight. You know, I, I think that, I think we all agree that if there's an emergency vet bill of several thousand dollars, that the, the animal in danger shouldn't be deprived of treatment, and so that practice should certainly continue, but some effort to allow us to be more involved in major decisions that involve the fund is probably something we can address by revisiting the policy that was adopted 27 years ago or so, 28? Councillor Morgenstein.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr.
Forward is on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I still can't hear myself. Yeah, so I think the long and the short of it is, the question right here, right now, is streamlining the process, and if we were to say, there's infrastructure, and then there's just veterinary care, which I don't believe any of us particularly feel a need to be a part of, when there's a large amount of money there to be spent, and that veterinary care, we would never want to limit. Right now, if we were to do some adjustment, Janice, what would get us the ability to not only say, and I'm imagining that the new animal control officer would agree, that an air conditioning system should be in there for the whole facility, the animals as well as the staff, what is the process that will get us able to get that money spent to do that? It's not just that we say, we'd like it, the thing has always come around to, can we force the hand to get the money spent? Is there any process in doing this that can make that happen? And everyone's shaking their head, probably not.
Well, you certainly can say that, you know, you can change the policy so that that type of expense or improvement has to be approved by the council, so, but, you know, you can't control the administrative oversight of the department by the mayor's office, and that's, that's the, that's where we always end up. So, but certainly, the, the council could take the position that, you know, that category of expense has to be approved by, by the council.
So regardless of what history has shown us, we're not always going to have the same mayor.
Correct, correct.
And I think it's valid to point out that we're changing something because of historically what has happened, but that even that change does not force the hand for that money to come out. Now, that trust fund is in the hands of the Town of Wallingford, the wording is such that no one could ever say animal control in Wallingford becomes a private entity, I think I've heard talk of, you know, people trying to put together a not-for-profit organization. There is no mechanism where that fund can be in anyone's different hands.
I don't believe so, I mean, it's, you would be talking, if you're talking about the animal control operation being turned over into private hands, that would be...
Or just the use of that fund into...
Yeah, you can't, you can't transfer the use of the fund to...
Right, and that's what I figured, yeah.
I, I would say that, I mean, I'd have to maybe look at that, my first reaction would be that you could not do that, that's a gift to the town, so, I mean, I, I'll give it some thought, but I don't, I don't think so.
But our, but our hands are really tied in the actual spending of the funds.
The actual spending of the money, but you certainly can, you know, put in the process that those types of requests come here.
Is, is there a value to that, given that we then can't spend?
Well, if this is the direction we're going in, changing the policy, then we could certainly do that at the next council meeting, but I think Attorney Small pointed out, you know, having us take over the, the administration of the department is going to require a charter change, and that's not something we can just do quickly, in any way, shape, or form. Councillor Testa.
Thank you. I've heard the term simplify, streamline, there's other, other things that can mean the same thing, right? And I think we'd all love to see that happen. But nothing we do can really do that in practice. But, I think that leads, to me, in my mind, that leads us to what I think the real issue here, not only the real issue in people's minds, but also the real issue in pragmatically, practically, what, how could we see things done differently? And that is the issue of awareness and/or involvement on our part. I never started this, and I'm not inclined now to use this as an opportunity to bash the mayor, I, mayor, mayor pointed out very well at the last meeting that they've never turned down, you know, a medical need, and he even said, it's not even used like we might have thought. If an animal needs surgery, they go get the surgery. The authorization of funds comes a little later when they decide, all right, what, what, what budget fund are we going to pull this out of? So, that's, that's not a concern of mine. I, I'm, well, when I said I'm not going to bash them, I'm also not going to defend them, I'm just saying, that's not really an issue. What is the issue, though? The issue is just awareness. And I'm of the mind to believe that when an issue becomes known, when we are aware of it, when we get involved, when the public gets involved, that in and of itself can trigger action on the part of the administration. So while I might say, changes we make can't force action, I'm not saying that that makes them futile, because I believe it, it is a means to an end. The end is, the administration is made aware of not only an issue that it might, for whatever reason, might not have been aware of, or for another reason, may not have felt was important enough, when then there is pressure from us, from we, the council, the representatives of the town, we feel strongly, even through a resolution, and the public, more importantly. That puts the mayor in a position where he's now responding to, who demands from those to whom he reports and is responsible to. And I, whether it is Mayor Dickinson or any other mayor, I think that has a lot of value, versus where we are now, where it's quiet. It's like everything else, a department head who doesn't want to make waves, get in trouble, sends a little request up the road, and if the mayor... up the road, and if the mayor decides, eh, it's not that big a deal right now, sit tight, it goes away. Because who in their right mind is going to go public against their own boss? That's just the way it is, how departments are run. So, we do those people a favor when we say, hey, I know about this now, let me bring this up. And that's where we're at. So, I think whatever we choose to do, if we understand that the fact that we can be involved, we can be aware, that is a big plus. It doesn't involve changing the charter. I know we're going to talk about Counselor Marone's suggestion of a commission next. And I would only say, that is the type of thing that I think could also do what I'm saying. It provides involvement, oversight, more active, uh, more active oversight, and then awareness, and so on. A change, a new ordinance, I don't think is necessarily, is necessary. A change in language can achieve the same thing. So I think what we should be focusing on is, how can we assure that someone other than simply the person in the mayor's office is aware and involved in ongoing discussions and needs about the animal shelter? And if we focus on that, I think we'll be, we, we'll probably achieve something. Thank you.
I saw all three hands to the left. Oh, you're suggesting I go left to right? Well, Counselor Todd.
Thank you. Um, I, I know Counselor Morganstein was talking about, you know, and questioning if we could, you know, that we have no control over how, you know, departments' funds are spent. But I think maybe what the big difference here is that it's not necessarily the department's funds that we're trying to control, it's, it's a gift. And, and a gift, and again, I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but the way I'm reading the charter, that section, is that we have control over how gifts are sent, and I know, spent. And I know that we get items on our agenda, you know, often where somebody donates, you know, a hundred dollars to the police canine unit as a donation, and we have to approve that, and, and then it gets spent. So I think the big difference here is that this was a, a very large gift, and it was put in a fund, but the way I'm reading it, I think we can choose how to spend it right now. I don't know that we need to, to do anything, because we're not, we're not spending departmental budget funds, which, you know, we all understand, we, we don't necessarily have the authority to do, but we do have the authority to spend a gift. And I think that's, that's what the difference is with this fund. So, I'm just wondering if we can just, as a vote of the council, say, because this gift was already accepted by a former council as a gift for the care of the animals, if we can just simply vote to say, "We're using this X amount to purchase and install air conditioning in, in the animal shelter," just by a simple vote of this council, since it is a gift and not budgetary funds?
I, I certainly think we can. The point that's being made is that just because we make that vote, that doesn't ensure that the money is going to get spent. That's the point.
Even if it's gift money and not budget money?
We're not the administration. The administration would oversee the improvements to the facility. We, we don't have the authority. It's not what, I mean, it's, and it's not unique to the Wallingford Town Council, it's, it's the way legislative and budgeting bodies operate.
Well, I understand what budgeting buys, but I'm looking at the line where it says, let's see, it's a little bit of a long line, but...
You're, you're absolutely right. We can, we can vote to spend the money a certain way, but that, we can't make the administration purchase and install the air conditioning.
Says the council may provide for the proper administration of the gift. I guess that's the question, that what's the administration of the gift?
I, I, I think it's how it's spent, but Attorney Small, if, if you have a different interpretation of administration, I'm all ears.
No, I, I agree with how you just explained it. You can approve, you know, within the, the parameters of what the gift was for. When it comes to the administrative side of government, they, whether the work gets done through the administration or not, is controlled by the administration. So, I mean, you can set the parameters of this that you wish. I'm not suggesting you don't, so, but, um, you know, that's, you're the legislative body, so...
Okay, understood. Um, well, then maybe, maybe we do, just an idea, maybe we do both. Maybe we set the parameters of how this fund gets used in the future, and then we also maybe just take a, I don't know, a symbolic vote, I guess, that we want to, that the, the council is saying, I mean, I think we're all saying, but maybe not everybody, but we can take a vote on whether we want to spend money on the installation of air conditioning in the animal shelter, and, and if nothing else, it's, you know, just maybe using our, our voices as a council to say, this is something that we would like, and then it goes to the administration. The administration apparently would, would choose whether they, they want to do that or not, but at least they would know what, what we would like to see happen. That's all. Thank you.
I think we can do all that. I think we should probably put it on a regular meeting agenda. If we choose to go that route. Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Because he said Fishplain could wait.
Correct. He's done. So I think, I think part of the problem is, if we talk about the air conditioning, we talk about the fund, I think there's sort of a, an unintentional misdirection there, because I don't think that the, and I'm not trying to guess what the deceased's wishes were, but to me, air conditioning is just sort of a capital improvement. I mean, if, if they had a van for the department and the van broke down, and you took it to a repair shop, that's in the interest of the animals in a certain sense, but to me, the air conditioning is something that just goes through the regular, you know, the town's has a lot of money. I think it's just something that goes through the regular town budget, and then you use the fund for things to directly care for the animals. And I understand that air conditioning, obviously, is a benefit to the animals, but it's also just sort of a capital building improvement. So, I don't think we take the money out of the, uh, out of the fund for the air conditioning. So, um, you know, I'm sort of with Counselor Testa on the idea that the issue here is not necessarily the, uh, I'm switching gears here, so, I see your face. The, um, uh, the issue's really more of a, of just knowing what's going on at the, at the, the shelter, and is just, uh, maybe having more, you know, eyes to look at the, at the issue.
I think whether she's doing it subtly or intentionally, Counselor Todd is highlighting to us the fact that we can do this with the fund at any time. The council doesn't have the ability to make a department budget amendment, other than during the budget process, or if an amendment is proposed to us by the administration.
Understood, but there's still the same catch-22, that if the administration was absolutely dead-set against this idea, it's not going to happen, right? Because they ultimately control the, the facility. So I, I think that it could, you could take the money out of the fund, at the, with the consent of the council, or you could make, you know, some other budget appropriation from contingency or something, with the consent of the administration, and it would, you'd have the same result. I'm just saying that I don't think we pigeonhole ourselves to the idea that this, the only source of this, um, getting what people are looking for is the, the fund. Because I don't think that's what the, was the intent of the fund, or should be the purpose of the fund.
Can I go to Counselor Fishplain now?
So this just got even more complicated, um, because the only time that we deal with other things having to do financially with the town is budget time. So, you know, which makes this even more, more difficult. But ultimately, just to, just to explain for those here and watching at home, you know, even if this body said, okay, we're going to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from the trust for the installation of air conditioning at the animal shelter, somebody's got to go get somebody to do that. So who has the authority to go sign a contract on behalf of the town? Well, the mayor does. So unless you have buy-in from those two branches of government, the executive and the legislative, you end up with a conflict, especially when this body is making a unilateral action without recommendation or request. So that's why, you know, what I've proposed is notice. So it, it creates two categories. There are emergency requests, and there are non-emergency requests. Emergency requests do not require something in writing, but they could. And those emergency requests are to be transmitted or communicated to the mayor. The mayor is supposed to respond within seven days, and then we find out what happened. And then non-emergency requests, like air conditioning, would be in writing. And that we get notice of that request within forty-eight hours of that request that's being made to the mayor. Mayor responds within seven days, and then we get notice of the mayor's response within forty-eight hours of that. That's all it says. So then, we have knowledge. We know what is happening with regard to this particular thing, these particular requests. And then, if we choose, not dictated by this language, we can make it a council agenda item, which really should have been done way back in two thousand and eighteen, really, here. That's, that's all that this motion that's before us does, and I think it keeps the conflict out. It keeps the original intent of the, of the council, which was to have the administration be the gatekeeper, and keeps us in the loop. I don't see how that would be a bad thing going forward, at least where we are, because we still haven't heard from the ACO that was recently hired. I don't know about any recommendations as to something happening, but even if at our next meeting, we appropriated the money from the trust fund, I know that there were plans a few years ago to expand the animal shelter. We aren't necessarily going to know about that unless we're working hand and glove with the executive branch, because then we're appropriating money for installation of air conditioning at a facility that is a waste of money, if they're going to redo the building. And that should be part of those plans, if that's going to happen. So, um, you know, I'm not jumping up and down about this language, I just think it's a good way to go forward as we sit here today, so that we're kept in the loop. So, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. So, um, if you're not jumping up and down about your language, I'm not going to either. However, I, I think it, it's fine as a policy that we can adopt at the next meeting, as opposed to scripting an ordinance that requires notice and publication and would take us longer to pass. I mean, I, I think maybe we throw in, you know, something about regular, regular veterinary care, maybe we throw in a dollar threshold that allows the fund to continue to operate as it historically has. But we, we do it as a policy, because we're not going to change the fact that this is a gift, and by charter, as has been pointed out so many times, we retain jurisdiction over the gift. So why make it an ordinance? Why not just, August seventeenth is two weeks away, we can act on it then.
Because ordinances are enforceable. Policies are not. Policies can change on the whim of, somebody just doesn't want to follow that policy anymore. So if we did a resolution, you know, I heard a, sort of a resolution about air conditioning, sort of, you know, that was a discussion, you know, that's, that's an actual document. But if this, this body says, "We're going to create an unwritten policy," I think you're going down a bad, bad route.
Two points. We're not creating an unwritten policy, we're approving a written policy. Second point, just because it's an ordinance doesn't mean we can take enforcement action against the administration. The, the ordinance doesn't give the council the right to do that, but I'll defer to Attorney Small.
Well, I'm concerned about the public. I'm concerned about the public knowing that they have something that they can rely upon. So if a policy's in writing, I'm willing to look at that and see what that policy is. The public can perhaps rely upon that, but...
Well, it would be if the, you're in charge of the administration of the fund. So if the council votes, you don't get a penny unless you file, you do, you know, you give us a copy of this or whatever. That's, that would be a violation for someone to act differently. So that would be, that would be spending money someone's not authorized to spend under the charter. But, you know, so, I mean, yes, you can do it by ordinance, but you can do it by policy. And I, you know, I do kind of think you should give the new animal control officer an opportunity to, to talk about the different categories and limits, if you want to talk about that. But I did want to say, on your proposed language, um, you know, legally, I'm a little concerned about telling them, the administration, that when a department gives them a request, they have to do it in seven days. I'm not really sure you have the authority to go quite that far, however, in, plus, the seven days, um, things have to go to purchasing, it may involve some other department. So there's all kinds of issues with acting on a department's request. So I, I think that that's probably not the best scenario. However, I do think there's, there's nothing inappropriate about the administration of this fund requiring notice, whether it be notice at both when the request is made and when the request is acted upon, or whatever, however you want to word it. I, I think that's perfectly fine.
Can I just, with regard to the response within seven days, if, there would be no need to go to purchasing if the mayor has rejected the response, right? Because there's not going to be anything to purchase. And certainly if the mayor needs more time to investigate, that is a response. It doesn't say has to approve or deny. That's not the proposed language. It says has to respond and communicate that response. So certainly, I'm a reasonable person, I mean, I understand that sometimes people need some more time, you know? In my mind, that's a reasonable response. So I'm just looking, well, looking for what the language...
Yeah, I, I just, I really, I do have a concern about whether or not you, the council can tell the administration how many days they have to make a decision, but, you know, we could take a look at it.
Is that a charter issue, or is that a...
I think that's maybe going too far in terms of, um, running the administration, but I, I'm not saying it may reach the final, I have some discomfort with that, I'd have to think a lot further.
So if we passed it, the mayor vetoed it?
He can't veto your resolution.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to figure out where is the challenge to that flexing of muscle?
Well, he doesn't comply with it, the seven day. Or she doesn't comply with it. I don't know who the mayor is.
Very good. Nice. And then we would be meeting an executive session to discuss whether or not to bring an action against our mayor.
All right, we're probably going...
No, that's procedurally, that's what we have...
You know, I don't, the bottom line is, I'm not quite sure I understand the seven days, this is generally, you know, we're talking about the administration of government, who knows what the request is as to whether or not it's something that needs to be, if it's a veterinarian bill, it's approved right away. If it's something else, you know, it's not normal for the, for the mayor to just accept that a department thinks that, you know, something new should go in their office, if I want, you know, new windows put in. It's not just, not going to take seven days, it's going to be, you know, well, why do you need it? What else can we do? Who's got it? Is there a bid that's already applicable to this? Does it have to go out to bid? Those are all things, and it's not, nobody's going to drop everything that they're doing in that instance and get something done by seven days. That's my, that's my point. I don't think that's such a major point on that. I think the key is that you, um, put as your policy that you are entitled to notice, both from the department and the, the mayor's office, in terms of what the response is, and I think that's certainly appropriate.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I had an epiphany. All along, I've been saying, you know, I, I'm not looking to remove completely the mayor's authority because of the need to authorize emergency medical procedures, and that was pretty much the only reason. And I've said that multiple times, and I said it tonight. We even talked about it at the last meeting, and I, I'm not sure how I missed this, but I reiterated it tonight, that the mayor himself said, you know, "It's not like I get a call at midnight that said, 'I have a sick dog, we have to get the surgery approved.'" He said, "Those, that's just done." And then, when the bill comes in, a week or two later, they decide, "Is this something we pay for out of the fund or not?" So that in and of itself justifies removing all authority for the mayor from this fund and having us take it all. So, going forward, that's what I'm advocating. I think, because I can't envision a request for use of this... I think, because I can't envision a request for use of this fund that can't wait for the two weeks it takes us to have a meeting. I used to think there was, but the mayor was kind enough to inform us that that's not the case. The animals are, have, they have a contract with the vets. They take the dogs to the vets and the cats to the vets. And then when it comes time to pay the bill, they decide, does it come out of the budget or the fund? So why can't we be the ones to make that decision? Why can't we be the ones to make a decision on everything that's requested for the council, for this shelter? Just as Counsel, Counsel Tata pointed out, may have been the intent of this gift all along. I'm kind of pulling back a little bit. I'm shifting my position here, and while still acknowledging we can never force him to do anything, we still can't do that. But use of that fund should be at the discretion of the town council, period. And everything else we talk about should be, how do we go about doing that? That's where I stand now. Ah, epiphany.
Does anybody see the ghost of Ms. Giannati in the room? Anything else from the council? Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In, just now that, now that's been brought up, I'm wondering, so if in another town there was an animal shelter and they didn't have this fund, what would happen? It would be, veterinary care would be budgeted for. And I think in ours, it probably is also budgeted for. And, and that's, that's how the vet bills be paid for, through the budget. It's just, it's an expense that the town incurs. So, and I, I still have to think this through, but if we were to go that route, then maybe, maybe we decide what we want to use this, this fund for, and maybe it's not, maybe the veterinary care just comes out of the, the regular town budget and this is used for, I believe the wording was the care and comfort of the animals, if I believe correctly, then maybe the council decides, you know, the animal control officer comes to us and says, hey, we think we need air conditioning, or we think we need hot water, or, or we think we need, you know, new bedding, whatever. And then the council decides, are we, is this what the intent of the fund was? Are we going to spend this money on, on that? So maybe veterinary care just, I guess I would need to know how much we spend in veterinary care each year from the fund as opposed to from the actual budget. So I would have to look that up.
We, we do have a veterinary care line in the AC budget, the animal control budget.
Right, yeah. So I'm wondering how much comes out of this fund and how much comes out of the actual budget. We'd have to, I'd have to find that out before I, you know, make a decision here, but I'm just, just a thought, maybe, maybe, maybe that's a way to, to accomplish what Counselor Testa is saying.
And I wouldn't be surprised if, if the fund is used once the regular veterinary budget is exhausted, so. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have an issue with taking all the power back, except I don't know that, I think you're going to see a lot of items on consent that are going to be, you know, care for this and care for that. But I just want to draw us back to the root problem, or the thing that we were trying to address in the beginning, was, was what we see as deficiencies in that facility and in the department. So changing how the fund is used doesn't necessarily fix any of the deficiencies in the department. So I, I just, I don't know that we're solving for the problem that we set out to solve in the beginning. And again, don't have an issue with, you know, with the solution, but I'm not sure that we're going to get to where we need to get to this way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think before we create a commission, I'd like to hear from the department head about whether or not the department head would want to work with a commission.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that, that a, a public employee gets to decide, though, who they, which members of the public they want to work with and which ones they don't. I mean, that's not a decision of government at all.
That wasn't my point. I wasn't suggesting that the ACO gets to choose who's on the commission.
No, no, I understand. But my thought is, so that, you know, you don't, we don't get to choose who comes to a meeting, right? Because it's just, it's whoever, whoever has an interest shows up. So my thought was the, the ACO doesn't get to choose whether or not he wants to work with a commission. So the commission, you know, the, the council has a, an investigative power according to the charter, and I see that creating a commission that reports to the council is an extension of that investigative power.
There are certainly a lot of things we can do. If there's nothing else from the council, then I'll entertain comments from the public. Name an address for the record, please.
Riley O'Connell, thirty Northford Road. I just wanted to follow up on, like, I think Counselor Ta, or, sorry, Counselor Testa and Counselor Fishbein both, both brought this up, and I know we talked about this last meeting where you can't deal with an issue or address an issue if you don't know the issues there, right? And I think that's what this motion is hopefully, to bring transparency to that process. But my follow-up, now you've brought up the charter so many times tonight, is what could the town council have really done had you heard this was an issue in two thousand and eighteen? You can stop the mayor, of course, from spending money, but you can't force him. If the issue is negligence or a lack of action, is there anything the town council thinks they could have done? I know the resolution would help, but at the end of the day, we've already heard that and we've seen that he can just ignore that. So is, did you have an idea in mind? I guess this is more specifically to Counselor Fishbein and Counselor Testa.
We don't typically have direct conversations between counselors and members of the public. It's just not how our meetings are run. But in light of the fact that this is a committee meeting, I will offer either the opportunity to respond directly if they so choose.
I mean, I've been known to do some pretty outside the box things. I mean, the first thing that I would have done is, I would have called the department head and gone down there and taken a tour and looked at that to gather my facts. Second, assuming that facts and allegations are corroborated, I would have made a council agenda item to, you know, bring light of the situation and to, you know, hear from the mayor in a more public atmosphere as to what's going on and the response there too. And from there, I would consider legal action. There are various things I don't need to get into during this meeting that, that could be sought, and those are the things that, that I would have done, and I'm, I still sit here very disappointed that I just learned of this a few months ago, so.
Can you just clarify exactly what you want me to answer?
Sure, just I guess...
Because I think I know what it is, but...
Within the current charter, is there anything the town council could have done in two thousand and eighteen had you received the same report that the mayor did? Should the mayor decide not to act?
Okay. Well, speaking for myself, I would have done what I did this time, what Counselor Fishbein indicated he would have, he would do too. I went there, I did talk to people, I found out what was going on, and I asked for a council agenda item. So really, your point is well made, if it, if your point is that had, is, is as I said earlier, awareness. If we're aware of it, we can involve ourselves in it. Just as, I mean, this is off the cuff a little bit, but, you know, we all get calls. We all find out about constituents who have a problem. One person had an issue with a sidewalk that was just absolutely disastrous. I said, yeah, let me, let me give, I'll give Public Works a call and see if they can take a look at it. We all do that. We all have the option to do that. We can't tell them what to do. We can't say Public Works, go fix this, but it's just, it's, it's a courtesy of being involved in government where you can say, hey, constituent's got a problem, can you take a look at it? If it involves the mayor involved to be, then of course the mayor is involved as well. But, you know, they take a look, they go out and they fix it. They weren't authorized to do it by me, they weren't ordered to do it by me. You know, the old, can you get a, can you get a pothole fixed? I'm not belittling the issues at the shelter by equating them, but the point is, we could do the same thing. Once we're aware of something, we can stick our nose in it. We can say, hey, what's going on? What's the problem here? I'd like to see something done. And nine out of ten times, something is done, which is what I was indicating before. We make the mayor, mayor's office aware of a strong feeling on the part of the council, because again, we can't act individually, that something is important to us, and that in and of itself can probably generate action.
Great. No, I appreciate those answers, and I think the only other thing I wanted to say is that I know Chairman Servoni did mention that this problem, this government setup isn't unique to Wallingford, of course, but in some ways it is. You're not going to find a town with the size of Wallingford, the kind of town like Wallingford, across the middle, you're not going to find that many of them that have as merrily strong of a town charter as we do, where there's a difference between having the power of initiative, which is this power to actually administer these funds, to take initiative and do something proactive as opposed to taking away funds, funds, and their responsibility of initiative, which is how some other towns have their charter set up. So when the mayor is, what I think many of us here would consider negligent or not acting on something, the town council would have the ability to step in and tell a department head or a department to take action on something. The overall role of the mayor wouldn't change, but the, the, something like a resolution with the town council would no longer just be symbolic, it would actually have power should you have the votes for it. So I just want to, I know town charters by no means something the town council could do their own. It's not a simple process, but that's been a big conversation we've been having outside before these meetings, and I do just want to, the town councils should start thinking about whether or not they have an appetite for that, because I think that's what it's going to take for us to really take the next step as a town and not, regardless of who the mayor is, avoid something like this. And this isn't the first and only time we've dealt with this issue, but avoid things like this, issues similar to this happening again in the future. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Mariah Melendez. I live at nine ninety Yale Avenue. I guess what I have to say is I'm just frustrated. I started this whole kind of rally in front of the town hall, so if you want to blame someone, it's me. And I'm sorry I didn't start this sooner. I just moved to this town this year. If I knew, you know, in two thousand and eighteen that these issues were there, maybe I would have been out there, who knows? But you guys have said a lot of things tonight, some things I don't agree with at all and some that I do. I, I really appreciate Counselor Tata's, you know, efforts to try to get something on, on the agenda and at least kind of urge a vote, because, you know, what are, what is a council for if, if we can't at least try, you know? And then that's, I think a lot of, of what we're upset about is we see a lot of you guys talking and, and saying a lot of things and, and not a lot of action behind it. And you guys say, you know, that you're, the problem is of awareness, right? That's what you have been saying. But I really think the problem is of the, of the animals, right? You know, you, the animals are sitting, no air conditioning. I used to work in a vet, you know, I won't go on and on, but I used to work in a vet. I used to put down animals who, who, I had to do paperwork for the animals who, you know, would come in with heat exhaustion or come in from heat stroke. I would have to do that paperwork, you know, and that is a hard job. Putting down animals is not easy, or seeing a dead animal because of heat exhaustion is, is not easy. So when, when Counselor Marone, when you say that you don't think the air conditioning, you know, when you think the air conditioning is, is just a, you know, a capital item, I don't agree with that. I, I think it's a welfare item. You know, air conditioning, you wouldn't have a house install, made nowadays without air conditioning because it's a welfare problem. You have cooling centers when it gets hot out. Why? Because above a certain temperature, we can't live like that. It's modern day, it's two thousand and twenty-one. You know, we're not living in, in, you know, pioneer era where we're on farms and no air con, that's not us anymore, you know? And we need air conditioning to live, and so do these animals. And I know a lot of this is, is not what you guys can do with right now. This is just an ordinance meeting, and, and I, I understand that. I, I understand how town government works, but I, I do appreciate the effort you guys are making, but I do have to say that I think a lot of it is, is kind of just words, and, and I really hope that you take what you guys decided tonight and really kind of, really, you know, go forward. And I know that whatever you guys decide, there could be a, a veto or, or the mayor could disagree and, you know, not want air conditioning, and then we're kind of back to square one. And then, you know, I'll be back here. And I really just kind of want you guys to keep in mind that there are animals behind this, there are people behind this, there are, are real life things, real life beings behind these issues. And, and when you kind of, you know, talking about capital improvements and all those things, you know, sometimes that gets, that goes over all of our heads, but we understand what air conditioning is and we know that the animals need it. So that's really what I'm here to say, and, and I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate the efforts you guys are making. Thank you so much.
I, I don't think Counselor Marone was trying to belittle the importance of air conditioning. I'm pretty certain he was describing how it would be allocated in the town budget and how it's typically described.
Sure, sure. And I just, I, I just don't agree with how he sees it, and that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my, can you guys hear me?
If you could get closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Ian Reynolds. I live on eight fifty Old Durham Road. I've been a resident and I've lived here for as long as I can remember, and I guess my main question is, is there anything at all that the council can really do without the mayor's approval? And if that is the case, is, is that the type of government that we want to have in local politics from now on?
Well, we're not unique in that. We have an executive branch and a legislative branch. In some way, shape, or form, we might have some form of a judicial branch, but that aside, it's not unusual for a legislative and budgeting council...
We're one of the few towns in New England that still uses the system, and we've, honestly, I think that...
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you. It, it's not at all uncommon for councils to have the limitations on what they can do. And our, our charter has existed since, I think, nineteen sixty, maybe a little bit later, and it was recently modified, I think in two thousand and seventeen. So it's not been ignored.
Well, that just speaks to how outdated it is then, the system itself. I mean, if we have all this negligence going on where, you know, it's not just the animal shelter, but other aspects in town that are kind of beginning to decline or stagnate, then don't you think it has something to do with the fact that there's no communication from the mayor? There's no real, it's, to me at least, it seems like no real care at all from the mayor. And it, it just kind of seems like an ignorant and, I don't know, tasteless way to kind of run a local government in this way. You know, we, you guys work for us, you know, it's not like you guys, you guys are somehow chosen or appointed. You guys are elected based on what the people in Wallingford want and desire. And I just feel like time and time again, you guys are neglecting what people are asking for and what their needs are. And I know it's not just you because you need, you know, the mayor's approval to some degree, but, but why should we continue to have this system if, you know, he's not here at the meeting or he's not involved in, in any shape or form it seems like the politics of Wallingford anymore? You know, he's off on vacation. That's, that's his thoughts. Or, sorry, that's where he is. That, that's it.
Bruce Conroy, Burke Heights Drive. Listen, really what we want from all of you, and I know you can't do it this time, is something done. We understa, I understand that no animals ever died there, but they've been transported elsewhere. I understand for care from the heat, all right? And I was there the day the building's air conditioning was broken and it was ninety-one in the cat room, and nothing was reported to the, to, to the state. So we definitely need oversight, some kind of commission to make sure is a wonderful idea. A resolution from the council is like what we have been waiting for. We understand that he can say, I don't care what you say, but we care what you say. And we want to see the resolution. And I understand, Chairman, that you really, you, there's nothing you can do. If he doesn't want to do it, he ain't going to do it. But we want to see you do it, because then we know you're paying attention and you're doing the right thing. And I'm not, and, and I've been talking to a lot of people in town, this is not a party issue. This is a, this is a people issue. And we, I'm just asking, make the resolution. I know you can't do it this time, but do it next time. Don't wait, just do it. And if he doesn't want to cooperate, at least you did the right thing. And I know Craig agrees, a single autocrat should not be able to just say no. The power goes to the people. If we want it, we should get it. And people have made their voice very plain, and it's not just the people. It's just the right thing to do. That wasn't a question, I know. I'm just making a statement. Anyway, you all have a great day. I'm going to be late for work.
Alexander Hens, twenty-two, Whining Brook Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut. I just want to start off by saying thank you for allowing me to be here. I feel comfortable being involved in the community appropriately. I also want to infuse the fact... I also want to infuse the fact that we're going off of a mayor who doesn't know numbers, I believe, from the last meeting, or two meetings ago that we had, he doesn't know expenses. I couldn't quote it, I was there. I've also been to a few other town meetings, and I know there's an abundant amount of money that can be spent, not just six million, eight million going to the infiltration of waterworks, sewer systems, electrical companies, there's millions of dollars that's left untapped in reservoirs that we can have surplus or audits through papers that we can get printed offline. So with that also said, there are memorial parks near what we're talking about, I guess the dog park, if we want to call it, because like, Community Lake is near there, and also we want to have access for the vets, right? So why wouldn't we want to have something more close to the dog park if a dog gets injured, so then it doesn't need to go halfway across town? Because we know that if a fire truck breaks down, or a police officer's vehicle, are we gonna send it to a shop, or ask a person down the street to fix it, or ask the mayor to give them more money to just buy him a new car? Because we only have one car for the shelter, right? But then if there's a dead bird on the side of the, anywhere world, or in our town, you have to call the police station to have them pick it up, or to hang up and say, "Oh, we don't want to do that." So who rules the town more, the police, the people, or the mayor? Because we have what, oh, excuse me, I don't have my glasses, I can barely see from all the, excuse me. But I get them tomorrow, I won't be so like spec op, but, excuse me. So with that being said, I think there is a way to find out how the council can appoint somebody or townspeople to be able to circulate money while also increasing revenues without raising taxes, because there's a lot of other stuff too, not just going on in our jurisdiction or executive branch, legislative branch, judicial, however we want to be eccentric about it, or circulate the dinero, I do feel that it's very possible, because I think it said seven days for him to respond? Now, I believe you get two weeks, becomes 14 days, we don't count weekends. And I know that if you can email saying .gov, that's automatically given by Public Works about any town park, any town ordinance or anything, you got a failed email sent back to you, needing to then ask them again, "How do I get in touch with you?" to then find out they're all on vacation, it's summertime. So do we put an air conditioner in the kennel or the dog's cell, or do we let them outside? Because all that stuff is all nasty over there. And there's a nice, open reservoir behind recessed, I believe that's what we call behind is recess, next to the dog park, that can easily be made into a location for a new shelter. Also in the equidistant lane for the vets, because there's one right around the corner, and, yeah, that's what I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, with that, we are back to the council. We do have a motion on the table. Council Tada.
Just a question, not related to the motion, but I'm just wondering, in sort of the need of getting something done, if someone donates material items, is that something that the council needs to approve, or only monetary? Because I know there were a lot of donations, I'm thinking in the meantime, you know, if we do want to talk to the new animal control officer, or, you know, wherever we decide to go with this, to get something done right away, I'm wondering if there, I think I had heard that there were, you know, portable air conditioning units donated, is that something that we need to approve, or do material donations just go directly to the department?
We approve donations of goods.
Okay, because I haven't seen any of those on consent, so that hasn't gotten to us apparently. Okay, I was just hoping that something could be put in there in the meantime, and I had heard that there were things donated, but...
I was there recently, and I, there are, in the office area, there are portable units that are operating.
But not in the kennel, or you didn't see, or?
You can't see the kennel from the street.
Yeah. Okay, and that could be another thing we could even, we could even ask of the administration too, to just in the meantime, I mean, I don't think that would be a huge expense to, or if we take back control of the money, we can maybe just get a few portable units, I don't think they're the, I mean, I don't really know, but I don't assume they're that expensive, but, okay, I just had the question about material donations as opposed to monetary. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Fishmine.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I keep on coming back to the cooperation aspect, because, you know, even the exchange that I just heard, and I also heard allegations of negligence and that kind of stuff, but, you know, if the mayor, if the town has donated a portable air conditioner, and the mayor was actually a bad person, and negligent, or, you know, or vindictive, and he would have the ability to direct that individual not to utilize that donation. So, you know, that's not the case that I know of, I know that donations have been made, donations are being used, that kind of stuff. And I come back to where we started, and I just think at this point, a level of oversight is appropriate. Now, the seven, the seven day thing, I mean, I don't, you know, when I put this thing together, I was just trying to be reasonable. I don't like to work with reasonable period of time, and you'll see in the end of the language, I did say that, you know, for cases of an emergency, there'll be a response in a reasonable manner within a reasonable period of time, but those are emergencies. You know, I don't know, I just think, as I heard tonight, I think we should do something, and I think for the purposes of where we are, I mean, just understanding procedurally that should this body approve of what's before it tonight, it doesn't become the ordinance, it goes to the regular town council where this whole thing will go on again, and, you know, possibly something gets codified, you know, that's procedurally what happens here, at which time we could perhaps, you know, deal with, massage the seven day thing. But I'm looking to, I just want to know what's going on, and this is the only way I can see it happening. So, I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the proposed ordinance. However, I just, I think because it is a power that we have by charter, I don't see the need to codify it into an ordinance, and we can revisit it, we can revisit the state of our oversight of the fund at the next council meeting by resolution. You know, the charter, I think, gives us that control, and I just think it's a perfectly expeditious way to do that, without necessarily making it the code.
So are you proposing that at our next council meeting, we take a more drastic action than just being notified? I'm just...
No, I'm suggesting that in the spirit of what you've outlined as a proposed ordinance, we can, we can visit this as a resolution, because it's a power that we have under the charter, that we can revisit the vote that was taken by the council in 93, and pass a new resolution that takes back your case some, in his case all, of the oversight over the fund. So we can, we can adopt a resolution at the next meeting that says, you know, when it comes to the small business as usual stuff, we don't have a problem with the mayor having the power, I'm paraphrasing to some extent what you're saying here, but, you know, when it comes to the bigger stuff, we want to be notified if there's been a request made by the department head that funds from the charitable, the Dog Pound Trust be used. Thank you. Council Testa.
I like the sound of that. I also like the sound of Council Tada's request or suggestion that we do pass, have an agenda item where we pass a very specific, strictly worded resolution, requesting the installation of the air conditioning, I'm all for that, that was coming anyway, so I'm all, I'm in favor of that. That's an action we could take, certainly not tonight, that's what I was trying to get across earlier, we can't do anything tonight. What we're talking about tonight can go on for a while till we get it right, because it's not going to impact the air conditioning, it's let's get this right. We talk about it in a few ordinance meetings if we need to, so this is what I was hoping for tonight, get it out there. But as far as the, and I, I thank you for your impassioned and reasoned reminder of what the heck we're here for. And, not that we didn't know, but it was nice to be reminded that we can do something right now, and Council Tada brought up a good way we can do it, so I, I think we can all look forward to something on the agenda our next meeting. But as far as this goes, I think, Council, what Chairman Servoni is saying, by resolution we can do what I suggested and/or what you're suggesting, Council Fishmine, and decide how you want to do that, I'll be on board either way.
The agenda meeting is a week from today, and I trust that we'll have something on the agenda. Council Morgenstein, you did want to speak.
Yes, I agree with everything that's been proposed, and then I would just add, I'm assuming, but I want to be doubly sure that the new animal control officer has been invited to our next meeting? Yes.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Or Attorney Smallcannon? No? Okay, quite all right. Council Fishmine, what do you want to do with your motion regarding the ordinance? Do you want to call a vote, or do you want to see what happens at the next meeting? Or want me to call a vote?
No, I, I think for the purposes of where we are, I think we've had a very healthy discussion tonight, and certainly if we did something tonight, as I mentioned before, procedurally, we would have to do something at the next council meeting, which they could be running conflict with each other. I would table, I would draw, well, table it for now, and, you know, if something doesn't happen, we can deal with it at our next ordinance meeting, I'm just hoping we can get something good done at the next council meeting. So I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Duly noted, and that will end discussion on item five, and we are on to item six, which is...
Hello, Mr. Chairman? Yes? Can I make a motion on item five? To move the Animal Welfare Commission?
You can.
I'll second.
So what is the motion?
So the motion is that we approve or consider the language that I submitted to the council earlier, which was the creation of an Animal Welfare Commission, the idea being that they, I had said five members, but I guess that's certainly negotiable, but a group appointed by the council, and that would report back to the council, at a minimally on an annual basis, in terms of needs and wants of the shelter. So my thought was that this is more of an advocacy group, so we have, you know, like the Quinnipiac River Trail folks, and other groups that advocate for there, for different items in town, I just think that because we're dealing with the care and welfare of animals in our control, I think it just, this should have a little more oversight or a direct path to the council, as opposed to just completely working through the executive branch.
Okay. Yes, I'm just trying to figure out how to incorporate his email into the meeting minutes, so I will, I note that your email was to all of us, and to the town clerk. Yep, okay.
Yeah, I think it already went to the clerk.
Yep, so we can, we can say that the clerk has the email, I just wanted to make sure about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Small.
Just, I just want to caution, you used the word oversight, you can't create a board to oversee this department, so this department is by charter, appointed and supervised by the mayor, and also governed by state statute, so using the word oversight is not really the right, it's not a power they would have.
Yeah, I agree.
They really wouldn't have any power.
Right.
So I just want you to understand that, so it'd be more like an advisory group, you know, they wouldn't be able to dictate anything to the department, or have any type of control of any kind, so...
No, understood that completely, and I don't think oversight, I may have used the word oversight.
You used the word, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, no, understood, thank you.
Okay, there is a motion and a second discussion in the council, Council Testa.
Yeah, in principle, I like this idea. I'm curious, because I memorized the charter so long ago, and I just, for whatever reason, I can't remember right now. The Park and Rec Commission, is that delineated in the charter?
The Rec Commission is in the charter, it's also by state statute, so this, this commission that you're talking about, there's no authority in the statutes either for that, I mean, so it'd be truly just an advisory type.
I ask because it's always nice to be able to have a model on which to base something new, and I was thinking, you know, we have advisory commissions for various things, so we just need to be careful about which, what we're trying to model after, but if the idea is, again, awareness, involvement, to have a group of, from the public and our professionals who meet fairly regularly, are able to report back to us on the, on the status and ongoing needs of this department, I don't see anything, I don't see any negative about it. I think it would be clear though, that it would be strictly an advisory body, and they would have to know that, and, I guess we just have to be careful with how we set it all up, and we want them, just the simplest things, like, you know, they can't go walking into the animal shelter whenever they want, just as if they run the place, because they don't, they couldn't, and they're, you know, so it's little things like that, we'd have to spend a little time on this, as, you know, formulating how it might work, and that would certainly involve, I would think wisely involve, the department itself. But I love the idea, I commend you for bringing it up, it is one more way I think we could reach a point where a lot of us, if not all of us, would like to see us be, and that's a little bit more aware of what's going on, and a little bit more involved in decisions that are made regarding the shelter. So thank you, Council, for that. I'm on board with this, I would, I don't think there's anything we could vote on tonight though, other than talking about it. We could vote on something, I suppose, but, ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my thought was, just to, just to get the ball rolling on it, I hear people's thoughts, because if it dies on the vine, then it is what it is, but it's, I think the problem we were trying to address when we set down this path was one of not knowing what's going on, you know, and I, like, I wish we had a fire department commission a year ago that could have advised us before, you know, that situation kind of went south. So, you know, to me, the antidote for government sometimes is just more light and more, you know, more people involved, so...
What department? Art?
I said the fire department.
Oh, fire, sorry.
Council Tada.
So we're talking about the Parks and Rec Commission, and Attorney Small said that was in the charter, and then you had mentioned the Quinnipiac River, do we have any commissions that are not in the charter or by statute? So like the Quinnipiac River Association, that, is that just volunteers who they created themselves, or was that a town-appointed?
They're actually a separate legal organization, the group is, they're kind of in a category of themselves, it's, I don't, I don't think you guys appointed them, they're private, or, they actually formed a 501(c)(3), I think, for donation purposes, so, but they do work with the town for their projects and whatnot.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
So there may be, there's, you know, public celebrations, I guess, is not, it's not in the charter, and it would be, what else is there? So it's not the, you know, it's not creating a commission that's not in the charter, that's not my concern, is once, you know, the Recreation Commission is in the charter, and I believe there's actually a statute that talks about that. The concern that I have and the reason... The concern that I have and the reason why I cautioned the councilman is because it won't have any power. And, you know, sometimes I think people kind of get caught up in thinking, I'm on a commission, I have power. And it can't, like, councilman said, you can't show up at the, during the course of the day and say, you know, tell me what you're doing and that kind of thing. So I don't know if there becomes a level of frustration, so you need to kind of be clear about that from the start. Um, and it's, it's an administrative position, and it's also governed by state statute. It's, you know, they, they have the power of arrest, so it's not, they're not, it's not, it's a little bit more complicated then. But in terms of advisory group, as long as you make it clear as to what you're doing. So I'm not saying you can't create a group because it's not in a charter. It's just that, for example, the Parks and, the Recreation Commission that's in the charter, that actually gives the foundation of its powers. And it, I believe the charter says that the council can give it certain powers if it so chooses. It's given them limited powers. It's primarily advisory. So that's the type of thing that I just need to make sure you're all aware of.
Right. Okay. Understood. Thank you. Um, okay. I'm just wondering if we, if we need, I guess that's all I have. I'm, I'm still, still deciding on this. Thank you.
So, um, for longer than I can, or as long as I can remember, um, the Animal Control Office facility is not open to the public. It's, you're only allowed in by appointment. Um, so there is, there is an issue of access, um, that we need to be concerned about. And then just reviewing your proposed language, um, I'm not sure it's so important because the commission's powers are so limited, but if you make a five-member commission and then appoint the ACO as a member as well, you have a six-member commission, and if there's something they're voting on, you could end up in a tie vote. So you might want to make it, uh, one more or one less, plus the, the ACO as a member. So those are my thoughts. Um, I don't, I don't know if you want to act on this tonight or have further discussion on it before we advance it to the next meeting. Counselor Fishbein?
I'm, I'm interested in having the discussion. Uh, I just, I can't support this language because, you know, if we look at under powers and duties, it says the welfare commission is charged with the review of the animal control department. They can't have that power. And the animals and their care. So that is like a big power grab. The developed maintenance and purpose of the Dog Pound Trust, um, I don't know that they can do anything. I mean--
Yeah, that would be, you get, you'd have to be delegating your powers to this commission if you did something like that, which I think is probably problematic. Have to think that out. I did try to see if any other towns had something like this. I couldn't find anything. I haven't finished my research on it, but, yeah, it's, it's got too many powers, so, um, I'm not saying it's a good idea to have, you know, conversations with people, but it can't in any way run the department or, and I don't know if, I mean, while you're talking about it, I think you probably should hear from the animal control officer, particularly when you're, you know, your thought is that they actually be a part of the commission itself. I think, um, one, I'm not sure that that's not a conflict, but, you know, in terms of what the mission is, but, um, I'm not sure how that will work.
That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's why I was careful to use the word review, because I don't think that they have any actual power. But my thought with respect to the fund was that they would help to come up with a plan that would then be approved by the council. So the council doesn't really give away any of its power as much as it just gets members of the public involved and people that are passionate about this issue, gets them involved in, in coming up with some ideas. Because, I mean, honestly, the nine of us could sit up here and talk about, you know, we think it should be used for emergency services or something else, but I don't know the daily workings of the, of the pound. And I don't think it's like other town departments in that, and other town departments don't have, you know, aren't caring for, um, animals or caring for whatever. So I think it's a, it's a little bit different. So I'm certainly willing to play with the language. I don't think we need to vote on anything today, but, um, I think the, I really like the basic idea of getting more people involved in this. The, the, and, you know, the other thing frankly is, if people have concerns with the way the facility is being run, correct or not correct, I think having members of the public involved means that then there's someone to reach out to that's not necessarily the mayor or the council that could explain maybe what's going on. And they don't even need to have their meetings at the facility necessarily. I mean, you could meet in town hall or meet anywhere. It's just that's my, my thought was more just, just review.
Um, so do we want to revisit this at the next ordinance meeting? Okay. Uh, then moving on. Um, item six was discussion and possible action on the town fees for use in parks. And Counselor Todd, I think your, uh, specific mission was to address an appeal process regarding, uh, the fees that we recently addressed. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Do you want me to--
Please.
Okay. Um, we left off, um, at our, the regular meeting where we voted, um, on this ordinance for the town fees for use in parks, that we may want to set up an appeals process in the case that a waiver was denied. And so I just thought that, uh, since we left off that way, that we should continue that discussion. Um, I was looking through the ordinances under Parks and Recs, and it looks like, um, there is an appeal process, it's 151-12, if a permit is denied. So there is an appeals process spelled out for that. So this would be spelling out an appeals process if a waiver, uh, is denied. So I just wanted to get everyone's thoughts and see if that's something that we want to add to that new ordinance.
Counselor Fishbein?
So I'm certainly supportive of having a waiver process, but I'm also supportive of individuals that are not trained in looking at these things going to one place. So I have trouble with an appeals process being in an ordinance, but the procedure that the waivers are dealt with being in a totally separate document. That was my, and I didn't want to get into a, you know, offline sort of discussion, but it would seem to me that if somebody wants to get a waiver, you know, here's a piece of paper, here's all the information. Um, so why we wouldn't be amending the procedure that's already been approved to contain that waiver or that, that appeal process is the procedural question. I, I just, you know.
Huh? Are you saying, okay, so--
All our ordinance says--
Yeah.
Is that Park and Rec can have a schedule of costs, right? And that we approve it.
You approved it, yeah.
Yep. So now that schedule of costs, that procedure does not have any sort of appeal process within the procedure that we approved.
You approved a waiver process?
Yeah.
You didn't put an appeal in it? Okay.
That's right.
Right. So we're here tonight.
So now we're here tonight as the ordinance committee, and what's before us--
Right.
Is 156.9, which is the provision that says we have to approve whatever they come to us with. So my position is that that appeal of the waiver should be in that thing that they came to us with that we already approved, not just standing alone in the regularly, in the ordinances. Does that make sense?
I don't know if that makes--
That's, that's what that stuff normally is.
I don't, so, I, are you saying you mean on the form itself?
No, within that procedure. We approved--
You approved a waiver procedure? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I forgot to bring the ordinance.
Well, that's, I, I--
So you, we have a waiver procedure?
Which is not an ordinance. It is a procedure.
Okay, but the, but that procedure was approved as part of the ordinance. Okay, so, all right, I'm following you now. Keep going.
So the ordinance, the only ordinance that we have allows us to approve the procedure that they come to us with.
Okay.
So now they've come to us with a procedure. We have approved that procedure.
Right.
But what is before us tonight is not modification of that procedure to include an appeal.
Well, it could be.
It could be, but--
Okay.
It's not in the backup, and that's, that's why I had--
Oh, was there proposed language? I don't have any proposed lang--
No, the only--
Oh, okay. All right.
There's nothing.
So you're saying you, you, you agree that there should be an appeal?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we can amend the ordinance that talked about the waiver provision, and we can add that?
Now, procedurally staying to the ordinance that we have--
Okay.
Does Park and Rec have to approve that first and then come to us for approval? Or can we unilaterally modify without their request?
You, you can provide, the council can provide an appeal process independently of them. That's, yes.
Okay, because that's not--
Because it's, the only power you gave them was to set fees. And then you gave them the waiver. So if you want to change, I, I think you, you're free to say, to add an appeal process if you so choose without them having to endorse it.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's the normal function of the legislative power. I don't, I don't think that that's, I mean, now that you've identified that, I mean, I'll take another look at it, but I really don't think that that's a problem.
Because I'm just relying upon the sentence in the existing--
Okay, read me the sentence, because I forgot.
Yep. Facility permit fee structures, including waiver provisions, require the approval of the town council.
Okay.
And that, I read that to not be initiation. It is somebody comes to us with a request--
All right, but I don't believe, since you're the ones who give them their powers in the first place, I think that the ordinance could be amended to include a, an appeal process of that as a mandatory item. I think you can do that.
But the question is, can the policy, you said the ordinance can be amended? That's--
Well, but the ordinance, you can say that the po, that the waiver policy must include an appeal process as provided, and then define how you want it, if you wanted to.
Do we have to do it that way?
Well, how else do you want to do it?
I want it right in the policy. If you are denied by virtue of these rules, you have the ability to appeal, um, to the town council utilizing this. That's, I don't want, I don't want the policy one place and the appeal, the appeal somewhere else.
Well, first of all, we can make the, even if you put it in the ordinance, you can require it to be a part of the waiver documents. I mean, it could be right there like it normally would be. Normally, when you're cited with something, you're, you're told how to appeal it. So we can fix that. That can be fixed.
Okay.
So if the council wants to provide for an appeal, you tell me what you want it to be, and I'll figure out where to put it.
As long as we get to that goal line, I'm good. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you. Just in, oops, sorry. Just in response to that, um, the, there is in the ordinance for the facility permit, it looks like it's one ordinance, and then it looks like possibly later on was added denial of permit and appeal. So those look like they were two separate ones. So I wonder if instead of editing this, we can just add a new one similar to 151-12 for denial of waiver instead of denial of permit, um, rather than editing. But then also, like you said, put it, we can put that wording right on that document also. So then there's an ordinance, but it's also stated on that document, um, you know, in the case of a denial, this is the procedure in accordance with ordinance such and such, which would be the appealed process.
Just make it part of the ordinance that the, the waiver form, the denial, has to have the appeal language on it.
Yeah, I, I, I think I, we would get to the goal line that way.
Where's it going? Where's the appeal going?
To the council?
You?
Was that, was that what you proposed to the council? The appeal?
Yes, I, yes, I would, uh, well, if we go the route of an ordinance, then, then yes, I would like, I did not, you know, draft any wording. I just wanted to make sure everybody liked the idea of having an appeals process in the case of a waiver being denied. So I guess we can all decide how we, how we want to go about that. But I would assume an ordinance would be drafted similar to 151-12, and then we can look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I guess I'm just trying to be clear. So when we pass the or, the initial ordinance, or, or the, the procedure, I guess, is that non, 501(c)(3) nonprofits can request a waiver of the fees, correct?
Yes.
So is there someone outside of 501(c)(3)'s that we're trying, that would benefit from this, that we think needs to be included? I guess I'm trying to figure out what are we getting to. So, because I, I have two issues. One is I'm just not sure what we're, the problem we're trying to solve for. And two is, there's like, I, I feel like there's sort of this cronyism factor that comes in if you start having the council decide who gets waiver fees, you know, who gets to waive the fees at the parks. So I'm not sure how to get around that. So not that anything would, you know, happen in--
That's the next election.
Yeah, I guess. But I mean, you know, it's like if Fiddy's friends want to throw a, you know, a real banger at the, at Doolittle, can he request a waiver for it? You know?
Well, the, the waiver provision, as I recall, has criteria. So if you took an appeal from a denial, you're going to take an appeal arguing to the council, and you'd have to establish that you met the criteria and you were wrongfully denied. And that's really what you're talking about. You've already decided on the criteria for the waiver. So if you want to look to change, that's a whole different story. So this would be an appeal from a denial of, you know, there is some, there's some judgments that are made in some of that criteria, I'm sure, but, you know, there is, that would be what you would be dealing with on appeal.
Okay. I understand what you're saying a hundred percent, but I'm not sure that that's what I'm hearing from, from my fellow council members. Because you're saying we set the criteria, and now it's just a matter of--
You set the criteria for the waiver.
Right. So we have a waiver plan.
Right.
But that, but the appeal that you're looking for is not to judge the facts as to whether or not they meet the waiver requirements. You're talking about--
Giving it to them anyway? Well, then don't have a waiver.
No, I'm trying to understand, well, I'm just trying to understand the, why we're, what we're talking about.
I, I do too at this point. I'm, I'm confused.
Well, I mean--
She raised her hand first.
Sorry.
I, I think my, well, my intent was, was this would be if a waiver request is denied. So if, if, um, if a party comes before the, the Park and Rec Commission, I believe it is, and they say, um, you know, here's, we meet all the, all the criteria to have our park fee waived, and the Park and Rec Commission denies it, and they say, no, we don't think you do meet that, that then they would have a further step to go to to say, hey, we think we did meet all the requirements, and we were denied, can the, can the council now, by ordinance, take a look at this and make the, the final decision?
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Counsel? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sure.
So you're saying you don't want to mess with the criteria at all? This is, this is simply to judge the fact of whether they meet, they met the criteria and were wrongfully denied?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we just craft the wa, the appeal to say something like, and the only issue before the body shall be whether or not they, um, were qualified? Because I think what you want to--
Correct.
Stay away from--
Right.
Is somebody coming before us and saying, I'm a nice guy.
Right.
I'm going to give you lots of money. I'm gonna, whatever, you know? And then it becomes a political waiver process.
There's no point in having criteria.
Agreed.
So that, that's how I understood an appeal would be. I was denied, and I did satisfy the criteria, and here is why I satisfied the criteria. I was denied, and I did satisfy the criteria, and here is why I satisfied the criteria. That would be the nature of the appeal, and the ordinance can say so.
So I think the appeal needs to be crafted in such a manner that would set forth that that is the sole criteria for the appeal. So I mean, I'm, I don't want to speak for--
Nope, that's absolutely what the intent was.
Okay. Then I think, am I presumptuous to say that you have some direction for language we might see--
I do.
Next month?
I do.
Okay. And I saw a thumbs up.
I trust Attorney Small to--
Any further discussion in the council? Any discussion from the public? All right, then, there being no further business on this agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed can stay, and I declare this meeting adjourned.